Okay, we're live.
Okay, we call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 20th, 2020. I ask that you all be advised for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever thankful for the ability of technology to allow us to have our meeting and to share our views and to take actions of public nature. We are thankful for the outstanding staff that we have behind us in the city that allows us to do this, and without them, I certainly would be lost, and I am sure many of the others of us would be too. So, we want to thank them for their good efforts tonight. Also, from our community, we want to remember those who are sick and infirm, and specifically anybody that has the coronavirus and is being self-contained or is in the hospital. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. Also, we want to remember all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be shown to them and all the other men and women from our country who are serving with them. Tonight, we ask for guidance and vision and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, and we are there very, very thankful for the great community that we have in Batavia, as is being vividly shown with our reactions and our support of all those involved in the Corona crisis. So, I just thank the goodness of everyone for their support and their understanding, and we will get through this, and we will overcome, and we are very thankful for the many blessings that have been showered upon us in recent days that has helped keep so many of us away from the coronavirus. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We ask the city clerkies to call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanson?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So, did I hear we have all 14 of us on the screen tonight? Is that what I heard?
I did not get Malley.
Yes, Malley is here.
I'm here.
He said, I heard him say he was there, that's why I asked the question. So, okay, we have a complete council, so we have the necessary corn to conduct business. Moving to item number four is a reminder to everyone to please speak into whatever microphone or computer screen you have in front of you, because we are not going to be heard if we don't speak closely to the microphone tonight, or whatever listening apparatus we have before us. Moving five, to item five then, items to be removed, editor changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything, Alderman Chanson?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Anybody else? Okay, we will, I guess, then move to, we don't have anything to motion on to change. So, let us move then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanson?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept in place on file the planned commission minutes of March 4th, 2020, the Historic Preservation Commission minutes of January 13th, 2020, for approvals, April 17th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $894,668.38. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,409,579.15. The city council minutes for April 6th, 2020, ordinance 20-30 declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing sale, and resolution 20-61-R approval of the Teamsters Local 673 from 2018 to 2020 agreement. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Chanson, second by Alderman Serone, I think I heard, for the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any comments, corrections, additions? Kirk call the roll then, consent agenda is presented.
Chanson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Rar?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number eight, which is tonight, we are honored to have Sherri Wilcox with us from Batavia Main Street, who's going to give us her updated report. Sherri?
Good evening, thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Who would have thought this was the new normal, right? So, it has been strange times, and at Batavia Main Street, we are charged with advocating for our downtown business community and creating environments where neighbors can engage with each other, shared experiences that remind us of the vibrant, tight-knit community that we have. That's certainly a challenge right now, and it'll continue to be a challenge into the summer season. But rest assured that at Batavia Main Street, we're facing those challenges with loyal support from our board members, our staff, and our volunteers. Already, we have begun planning, planning for our regular events throughout the season, and addressing all the alternatives, adjustments, and whatever accommodations we may need for what the future allows, so that when the doors begin to reopen in our downtown and our community begins to return to our downtown streets, Batavia Main Street will be ready for them, committed to present activities and events that are safe, welcoming, and decidedly Batavia. Now, as you're all aware, we canceled our April 11th egg hop event, and with so much, so little known, rather, about what May holds for us, we did make the decision to postpone our Well Batavia Festival and our Race to Market 5K event until late June.
Good.
Already, accommodations for distancing have been made, moving that festival from its traditional location at the north end of the Farmer's Market on River Street to Appleton Park to allow for more open space between booths, more open space between people. Plans are in the works to adjust how that event is offered even further as the need for more changes arises. Second Fridays, the next, which was scheduled for May 8th, will become a virtual event, and we've already gotten an assortment of local businesses on board with online activities and offerings to highlight what their businesses are, and there will be an assortment of music, lecture, family activities, art, DIY, kids' story time, great deals. We have a lot on tap already, and we hope for more. Our hope is that as folks plug in, they feel a connection with our vibrant downtown and a connection to each other, something really important in these times, whatever we can do. Speaking of that connection, we at Main Street have been absolutely overwhelmed with the support and success of the Taking Care of Our Caretakers initiative. To date, that program has raised more than $28,000 from more than 360 donors, all to be spent at local restaurants and food purveyors to feed our frontline essential service employees. So far, the program has served 1,528 people and supported more than 25 businesses in town. We've watched this program raise spirits of everyone involved, from donors to delivery volunteers, those fed and those funded. Personally, I can say that it's been an absolute joy to be able to pay our local businesses to do what they do best in service of some amazing members of our essential workforce. Later this week, Batavia Main Street will be helping with a campaign I hope will benefit even more businesses from our local community. Our neighbors, Black Cactus Print Shop, have become a small, begun a small business program that produces T-shirts for local small businesses and sells them on their company website, with proceeds from every single shirt sold going straight back to the business. Community members will be able to show their support for their favorite local places, even some that have been closed this entire time, by purchasing a T-shirt that they can pick up once it's printed at the Batavia Main Street curbside farmer's market. And speaking of the farmer's market, a quick update on that. Our curbside market, the winter market, was, which was adjusted at the beginning of this in March to be a pre-order, curbside-delivered format, is clicking right along. We have about six to nine participating vendors every Saturday, and each week, more local customers discover the option and place their orders. We're also currently working with the Illinois Farmer's Market Association, which has come up with plans for summer markets across the state that address the social distancing and sanitation concerns in our communities today. Farmer's markets have been identified by the state of Illinois as essential during this time, and the association has offered guidelines for structure and service that have been approved by the Illinois Department of Health. At Batavia Main Street, we will be introducing the changes in accommodations that fit the needs of our own Batavia farmer's market when it opens this summer, to provide a safe and efficient weekly marketplace option for everyone in the community who depends on it. Finally, as most of you, I'm sure, have noticed, the Batavia Boardwalk shops have become more than just an idea. Excitement surrounds this new retail section of our downtown, excuse me, and, pardon me, excitement surrounds this new retail section of our downtown. It's another example of what happens when hard-working, committed members of the community, residents, business partners, volunteers, city and more, work together for the greater good. As we move forward, day by day, with whatever this virus may throw at us, we continue to persevere as a community, and many of our businesses continue to operate in whatever capacity they are allowed to, so don't forget about them. In times like these, it is the neighborhood that offers the most help to each other. They need us, and we need them. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherri. That was an excellent presentation, I appreciate it. That was very well done. Anybody have any questions to Sherri? All right, we will move then to item number nine, proclamation for 2020. Alderman Chanson?
Your Honor, a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more, planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Batavia has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the City of Batavia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and wetlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations on this 20th day of April 2020. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
I got it. Meitzler?
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Chanson, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of the Arbor Day proclamation, any discussion? I might note, the Batavia Tree Commission this past weekend set up right outside the door of our City Hall here, a free donation of tree stands to, they were just little sticks of trees, but I know people who have taken those over the years and planted them, and the trees grew to be 70, 80 feet tall, so we had a stack of them there, and by the time the weekend was over, most of the people, a lot of people would stop by and picked up the twig and taken it home and planted it, so I gotta believe we've just added to the tree population of Batavia this past weekend by the actions of the Tree Commission, so just wanted to pay note to that. Anybody else?
Mayor, this is Laura Newman. It was 350 trees that we were able to give away, 250 red oaks and 100 pears.
Very good. Good news. All right, any other comments on the Arbor Day proclamation? If not, I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
O'Brien?
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
I did not get a response from O'Brien.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the vote is 14 yes, no, no's, none absent, so the proclamation is approved, and we'll get this out and circulated to folks. Okay, moving to item number 10, which is resolution 20-068-R authorizing the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBAs, from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated of Deer Creek, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $262,250. Alderman, Wolf, do you have this under city services?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is to replace our SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. Our chief has secured an assistance to firefighters grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, to help with the purchase of this. We will be funding approximately $23,000, and these are out of the three, they were the most expensive as far as the initial cost, but due to the fact that the maintenance costs on them going into the future will most likely be less because of the style of battery that they have versus the other brands and some other issues that were noted in the memo that we got at last week's Cow meeting, we've decided to go with the Scott system, and that would be the 10, our 10% on it would be $23,841, and the maximum amount would be $262,250 remaining of that coming from FEMA. Are there any questions?
I got a comment, Michael Ryan.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to compliment Chief Dyke. The past 10, 11 years, he has pursued successfully many grants from either state or federal government due to various pieces of equipment for the fire department to upgrade all our equipment. It keeps our firefighters safe, which is in itself a saving, injury costs money, and the equipment we would have to purchase if we had the grant or not, because you, you know, the stuff does grow old and from use and gets worn out, so he has saved the taxpayers' tax dollars, a great sum of money over the years, and I just want to give kudos and many thanks to Chief Dyke.
Thank you for saying that, that's a very nice comment. Anybody else? Okay, that's the clerk to call the roll then on resolution 20-058-R for the purchase of the self-contained breathing apparatus.
I need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we...
That's Wolf.
Second. Knop.
Second, Ryan.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of resolution 20-058-R. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Chanson?
I'm not getting a vote, does anyone hear that?
Alderman Chanson, are you here? Maybe you got disconnected. All right, well, anyway, the resolution is approved for 20-058-R by a vote, I guess, of 13 yes, one absent, and no no's. All right, moving then to item number 11, which is resolution 20-059-R license agreement with owner of Popcorn Depot. I think this would be Alderman Chanson if he has it. Are you on, Dan?
If Dan is not on, I could present this item.
Go ahead.
Okay, the popcorn depot has been a feature of our downtown for 90 years. It hasn't always been located in the same spot, but the previous owner, Robert Peppers, leased a piece of property from the city on which to have the popcorn depot, and it was at the corner of North Water Street and Houston Street. Last year, unfortunately, Mr. Peppers had to close the stand, but he has sold the business to a Batavia resident, her name is Talitha Mueller, and she's very excited to carry on the tradition of the Batavia popcorn depot, as well as provide employment opportunities to young people in the special education programs of Batavia High School. And so, the city has no other need or use for this particular parcel, and so staff supports this use to benefit the community. So, we're recommending that the committee of the whole recommends approval to the city council of resolution 20-59-R authorizing an amended license agreement for...
Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved. Wolf.
Moved by Alderman Rosado, who's the second? I didn't catch it. Who seconded?
Wolf.
I didn't hear that. Who'd you say?
Wolf.
Wolf.
Okay, moved by Rosado, second by Wolf, for the approval of the resolution for the license agreement for the popcorn stand. Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Oh, excuse me, Alderman O'Brien?
I just want to say, this is Alderman O'Brien, I just want to say, your comments at the Cow meeting were spot on, and this is a great thing for Batavia, it's like a Saturday evening post cover, kind of like the depot con, and so it's a great tribute to the city to keep it going.
Thank you. This is certainly, you know, there's probably, anybody that's 80 years old in town today can remember when this was still probably just brand new, but it's been there now 90 years this year, so it's well for a community tradition and certainly a standout of community life that many generations before us remember, enjoying, and going to, and being a very popular thing, so if there's anything in Batavia that has a legacy associated with it, this is certainly one of those places. So, any other comments? Ask the clerk to call the roll then on the license agreement.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Was that, was everybody voting on that one? I think they were.
Yeah, 14.
Okay. Motion's approved for the resolution of 20-059-R, the license agreement for the popcorn stand is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is the administrative report. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. On the financial front, it does not appear that there will be any relief for local government in the new pact that the Congress is currently working on, and we're also digesting the news, just as Main Street and the city as well, that this $350 billion paycheck protection program loans that were meant to help our small businesses in many cases went to very large businesses who would have had strong access to capital markets anyway. For us, this impact to our small business community may be more dire, and thus, the financial impact to local government revenue is still very much unknown at this point. However, we have begun to do some very high-level financial modeling of what our finances might look like on our various scenarios, and then also, at our next committee, the whole meeting, staff will be making recommendations to postpone some planned expenditures that we had planned for 2020, and that will be at our next committee of the whole meeting on April 28th. Related to that, members of city staff, Main Street, and Chamber will be meeting virtually as part of a new initiative of weekly meetings to coordinate our efforts to support our local business community during these difficult times. Matters that we'll be discussing on our initial meeting include holding an electronic town hall meeting for our business community, making sure that they're aware of all of the resources that are available to them from various sources, locally, regionally, and at the state level, and also have an opportunity for them to ask any questions that they might have. And also, as the state is still maintaining that they do have funding available for the removal of the low-head dams along the Fox River, we're continuing to push that project ahead. We should have the Perk District staff in February to discuss our January meeting with IDNR, and a Perk District consultant for waterway planning was also in attendance at that meeting, and they are going to be creating a scope of work to review the former plan to determine if that is still feasible, and once we have that scope of work, we will bring that back to you for consideration. In January, the IDNR indicated that they would be looking to, for what our plans were for moving ahead, six months from that meeting, due to their existing flow, so we should be getting back to them sometime in July. In community and economic development, the Historic Preservation Commission met on April 13th and approved changes to the Boardwalk shop siding material. The Plan Commission met on April 5th and approved four items from continued Plan Commission meetings. These included a conditional Riverside pickup for the rain variance for setback reductions at 227 South Water Street, and design review approval for an addition at Holy Cross Church on Main Street. In public works, roadway, curb, and sidewalk construction has begun in Area 3, despite the spring snowfall. The 2019 project is still on schedule to be completed in mid to late May. It is possible that some crews will remain on-site and move directly into the 2020 project in June. Main Street construction has ramped up and is now fully underway. We had some roadway, I guess, directions that at first weren't ideal, but we sat down with construction crews and made changes to that plan, and those changes seem to have made things flow a little bit better. Drivers are encouraged to utilize Wilson Street as an alternative east-west route during the course of this construction. And at this time, I'd really like to take an opportunity to thank our PPS, Public Properties and Services, personnel. They have been working tirelessly to ensure that our facilities remain clean and sanitized. Our crews are regularly checking to ensure that proper cleaning supplies are in every single department available to all city staff. I just, I cannot say enough about how those individuals are making sure that our work environment is safe, and I'm really grateful for that. In communications, we've received the final survey draft timeline from National Community Survey, so I expect them to have a little bit of communication... So I expect within a couple of weeks, communications will start to go out to our community, asking for their response to our community survey. We are submitting the City of Batavia logo to the National Savvy Awards Competition through CMA. We're continuously updating social media and our website and our coronavirus page to make sure that citizens have as much information as possible as information changes on a daily basis. Also, if you go on our website, on the homepage, you will find information about the Batavia Community Care Program. The phone number for the Community Care Program is six three four five four C K R E, and the website is, I'm sorry, the email address is communitycare@cityofbatavia.net. This program provides essential services to seniors and disabled members of our community who may not be able to run errands for themselves. They simply call the number or send an email, and the city is working in conjunction with RSVP and United Way in order to run those errands for them. We're also calling seniors and disabled members of our community who we are familiar with through other programs, and specifically contacting them to find out if they have any needs. We've also created a YouTube channel for the city to host various projects and announcements. We also encourage all citizens to sign up for the city's weekly e-newsletter, and you can do that by visiting our website. At our next meeting, which is a committee of the whole meeting, next Tuesday night, April twenty eighth, we will talk about the budget adjustments, and we're also planning to talk about One Washington Place, next steps, the alternatives of de-tipping and re-tipping, or simply just leave the same tiff area in place. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Laura, this is Alan. I've had contact and also experienced it myself, some really high-speed traffic on Morton. Got an email today from a constituent that had complained, I think, last year or the year before, about how traffic seemed to just increase in speed constantly on Morton. And with the traffic being diverted around Main Street and Morton being one of those routes it's being diverted to, is there any way we can up patrols there or maybe do something different on Morton to try to slow that down?
Yes, I'd be happy to share that with Chief Yule, and we can definitely step up patrol and patrols in that area.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Yes, Dan?
Yes, I just want to make a quick remark regarding the SBA PPP program. I'm not speaking on behalf of my bank, but I can say, speaking to other banking professionals and with clients and whatnot, it's our understanding that there's supposed to be additional monies likely coming for that plan. So I would encourage Batavia businesses to continue to work very closely with their bankers. From the reading I've done and the analysis that's come out, it sounds like a lot of that money went very quickly to people who were already in line before the average ma and pa place who really needs that money could get in line. So it's been a very, very frustrating time for people in my industry, and we feel for our customers, and we're certainly doing the best we can to help them. So I just want to remind Batavia business owners, please continue to work with your bankers, because it looks like there might still be assistance out there.
Any other questions or comments for Laura? All right, thank you, Laura. Moving to thirteen is committee reports. Government Service, Alderman Chantet?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple reminders that during this lockdown period in our garbage, we cannot put anything outside of the cans or the bins that they have, no big pieces. And then also make sure that you watch the city website for pickup for yard waste and brush pickup, so that make sure we get the stuff off the streets as soon as we can. So watch those schedules. Thank you.
I think also we can still put out bags if they got the red sticker on them.
Right, they can put out a stickered bag or anything in a can, but they can't put out any big items.
Right, correct.
Or couches or, you know, appliances or anything.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing to report at this time.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Okay, other business? Anybody got any other business? All right, going to the mayor's report, I just want to make a couple of remarks. You know, I think obviously in the annals of the history books of the future, these last four weeks and maybe a few weeks that are still in front of us are going to be remembered quite vividly in most history books as kind of a unique moment in not only Batavia history, but certainly American history, because this has certainly been a movement unlike anything we've ever quite seen before. And I just want to say that I am, you know, very appreciative of all the efforts that have been made by so many people and groups and organizations in Batavia to step forward and everybody trying to look out for everybody else and helping people who don't have specific things in their life or have special needs. It has just been heartwarming to sit here and watch, and in some instances, I've been able to get out and get my feet wet in the situation myself, where we've had a lot of great actions that have gone unnoticed by a lot of people, but there certainly has been a lot of heartfelt efforts made to support our community. And I will tell you that as the mayor, I am very, very proud of our town at the moment for the way we have stepped forward and stepped up and really shown what we're truly all about. And if you feel a passion for, you know, helping your fellow citizen or helping one another, this has been a moment in Batavia history that may be unparalleled as far as the number of us stepping forward and doing what we needed to do. And I think it's somewhat reflective that we've been able to retain our Corona numbers relatively at the lower end, because I think there's been a widespread appreciation for the dangers of it. We've certainly tried to follow the best we can. All the rules and conditions have been set out. And I think it just speaks well for all the efforts that a lot of people individually have taken to protect their neighbor or their family or whatever, as far as stepping up and making sure that they restrict their ability to encounter it. So this has been a really proud moment in the history of Batavia, in my opinion, and I'm just as, I just want to publicly say that, that Batavia should be very pleased with itself, and hopefully we've set an example for our future generations to follow, that when something like this happens, we know that this town will step up and do what needs to be done, regardless of how popular or unpopular it might be, that we are here to help our citizens and help the community. That being said, as it's already been noted by several previously, we do have a lot of, specifically in the business community, we do have a number of businesses that have been very deeply impacted by all this. And the staff and myself and others have been working with them. A lot of it is just the total lack of ability to do any type of business, because everything's been shut down or sequenched. I think there's hope that things will begin to loosen up here in the near term, but we have yet to hear the official word from the state of Illinois as to what we think we can and cannot do. I'm sure there's going to be rules and restrictions on it as we go forward. But this has been a moment of challenge, and I have to believe, as Laura has already got the staff and herself looking at, this is going to have some deep-seated, specific financial impacts on the community, and probably is going to slow a few things down that we had hopes of maybe doing quicker than what they will be done. But at the same time, I think our budget will hold forward, and we will not be in a really bad situation. In my other roles in the region, I had the opportunity to talk to a whole bunch of other mayors in other parts of the area, and there's some towns that are really in a very delicate moment and are very troubled by what's happening to a lot of them. I don't see us having that deepest situation in Batavia, but we certainly do have, you know, a lot that we need to keep our eyes on to protect our business community. We really, though, at the end of the day, I would tell you, you should all be very proud of yourselves as members of this city council and the community that you represent, because the citizens have stood up very strongly and shown their true hearts and souls and the bright color of care and concern that each of them seems to hold in looking out for the betterment of this town. So we are a good city from the heart. From the heart, we speak from the heart, we work from the heart, and we have a lot to be proud of here. And I think something like this has a tendency to bring this out, and I just wanted to talk about it for a moment at the meeting. And some other, I think, bright moments, as you know, we have been working for a number of years to get our, we have three surface transportation programs, which are partially federally funded, that we were in line to get. And one of them is the Main Street work, which has started from Water Street out to Vanortrick. And if you've been out there, you know there's only one way westbound on that street at the moment, and there's all kinds of new utility poles and curb and gutter and new sanitary and storm sewers being put into the ground. There's a lot going on there, but that's going to make, I think, a real major improvement for Batavia's southwest side, because it's going to, one thing it's going to do is certainly it's going to loosen up some of this problem we've had down there for well over a hundred years, where we had the sanitary and the storm sewer sharing the same pipe. So that's a project that is underway. On the east side, we are about so, I am told, sometime probably near the end of May, we will be commencing the project on South Prairie Street, which will start at the railroad tracks where they cross Wilson and go down to Pine Street. And they have hopes to get that project, again, that's a FAU federally subsidized project. And in both projects, we're getting well in the millions of dollars on both of them, so I'm very pleased that we have those and that's money not coming out of local taxpayers' pockets. But we will have those two very nice projects done hopefully by the end of this year. And then we still have a third project, which is the railroad signals at Prairie and Wilson along with the traffic signal. And we have to do some work on that intersection and combine some stuff and separate some things and put that together. But that's, again, a federally funded project, but we're probably a year or two away in realizing that funding. So I just didn't want anybody to see South Prairie Street being rebuilt, but gee, the intersection didn't get done. Well, the intersection's in the pipeline for being done, but like everything else, as Laura's indicated, that the ability of federal and more interestingly, state money is up in the air. And we are certainly there trying to make sure we retain and hold on to everything we have. But right now, the state of Illinois has got some very strong financial issues facing it, and I think we have to give that a little breathing room. And so I'm not optimistic that there's going to be a lot, if it was state-funded, that there's going to be a lot happening in many areas. I know they'll try to do everything they can, but they're under tremendous pressure, because they were in a deep financial hole before this whole Corona thing started. And the loss of sales tax and other activities that were providing revenues to the state of Illinois have certainly been restricted. So the state of Illinois is, I think, going to have to, you know, put itself back together in some instances and start forward with some new ideas. But it's going to be a long haul for those folks, I think, to have a strong financial package. So I guess that's the, I would like to kind of end my remarks with a kind of a humorous little story, because it goes so well with the boardwalk buildings that are being built at River and Wilson. And I've had a lot of people ask me, I guess people didn't read the newspaper or whatever, what are those buildings? And when I explained what the vision of the city council was to do that, everybody, oh, that's an interesting idea. I've even had some people call here and say, gee, where do I get my name on the list to be an applicant for one of those buildings? So I know we had more applicants than we did buildings when they were finally chosen, but if those turn over, I think there's going to be a lot of people waiting in the wings to take them over. But one of the things I think is kind of, and I'm going to have Griffin post this on the city website here in the near term, for many, 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 many years, the old timers out there will remember that my great-grandfather built a building that was at the corner of River and Wilson Street in eighteen eighty. And then he operated a grocery and a pharmacy. He was the pharmacist in the store. And then later, my grandfather ran a grocery store there till he died. And then my uncle ran a, I guess I would describe it as a hobby shop in the building till nineteen seventy-six, when the state of Illinois bought the building to widen the intersection at Wilson and River. Where I'm going here is, is that the intersection at Wilson and River, for many years, was kind of dominated by a large billboard sign that hung on the side of my great-grandfather's store that advertised squirt soft drinks. And it was kind of a cute little sign, and it hung there forever and ever and ever. And when the state tore the building down, I assume the record ball knocked the sign off and away it got hauled to the landfill. And just this last week, because of the boardwalk shops now going on, Tom DeWiggins, who is one of our elderly residents, lives down on the southeast side of town, he had taken a photograph of that sign, really a great photograph of it, sometime in probably the late nineteen fifties would be my best guess. And his grandson just recently was going through Tom's sled of slides, and he found this picture of this sign. And so he posted it on Facebook, and it immediately got a great debate going about where it was and everything else, and there was a lot of fun about it. But I'm going to post it on the city, the picture of it on the city website, so everybody can see what that is, because I think a lot of the old timers in the community will get a kick out of remembering that squirt sign, because I don't even know if squirt is a soft drink. Is that even still sold anymore? I don't even know if I think I know that. But anyway, it was a cute, it had a little advertisement things painted into it and everything else. But it was a very prominent sign in downtown Batavia for probably well over fifty years on that corner. And now the corner's the home of the boardwalk shops. So we're now creating a whole new time of Batavia history there. But hopefully, I think it's good that, you know, you kind of see how the transition of the community goes forward. And we've had some other folks in the office in the last few days, even with the Corona thing, inquiring about doing things in downtown Batavia. So I'm uplifted by what I think is kind of the movement that's helping come forward. I still, as I've mentioned to you before, I still worry about we're going to have so much success. We may have a parking problem, but I think having a parking problem in your downtown, if you're going to have to have a problem, that may be a good one to have, because it tells you that there is a lot of people wanting to be down there and shop and visit and be part of the downtown area. So all things considered, my hat's off to the city council for your vision and going forth with putting the boardwalk shops in. As you may remember, I was somewhat reluctant to talk about that one, but the rest of you wanted to go forward. And that one, you were truly right, and I was truly wrong, it appears. And I just wanted to publicly commend and thank each and every one of you who pushed the idea along, because it certainly has created a new air of excitement. And what is, as we've just already said, a very challenging and difficult moment in the greater world. But Batavia's got some cute little things going on that I think a lot of people are admiring and thanking the council for its vision and putting that stuff together. So my kudos to all of you who have been part of that conversation, because I think we've really done something to help Batavia at a moment when it probably along with any other town out there could use any new little innovative thing that comes into town that makes it a better place for people to visit. So thanks to everybody involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Michael O'Brien, may I make a comment, please? Just following up on what you had said about the financial stresses, you know, obviously the state, the municipalities, our residents, our businesses are suffering some financial stresses. We had many discussions regarding, during the budget time, about our reserves and how we're going to handle the reserves. Maybe we should lessen what we're holding. I think this is a great example. Batavia is in a pretty strong position due to our reserves today. And I just wanted to, again, compliment everyone that we were able to maintain such good reserves.
Thank you. I think that's certainly something that the city council can continue to have discussions about, probably at your committee meetings, as to, you know, what we want to do with that money, and, you know, there's things we can do. Certainly, I would suggest the boardwalk shops are kind of an expression of our willingness to spend some money on some stuff, because without that, I don't know if we would have been able to do some of that. So that's really very, I think, appropriate that we have the discussion going forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to, that was amazing what you just said about the shops, because what I have seen, you know, since we were talking about it, yeah, it's kind of on us to maybe get the ball rolling a little bit. But the people that are out there building it and taking part in the construction, the making it happen, a lot of them are doing it, and their businesses are closed and shuttered right now. a lot of them are doing it, and their businesses are closed and shuttered right now. But they are out there serving their community and putting community first. And for me, I am so incredibly proud of everyone that is supporting it, putting their dreams into those buildings, creating those buildings. That, to me, is everything about what we love as our community.
Well, thank you. I think that speaks well to the other side of it. And I appreciate you bringing up all that volunteer effort that's gone in there, because I try to visit it every weekend, and, you know, some of them have been there every weekend, and then there's some new faces that seem to pop in and out of there at different times of the weekend. And, you know, Sherry and Jamie and all the folks associated with Main Street are there. And, you know, Margaret and all the folks from the Chamber seem to be circling the wagons. So, you know, we've got a lot of interest, and we've got a highly talented group of people now assembled in Batavia in the downtown business agenda and leadership roles, that we're in a very good place at a very good time. And I just think that this is going to be an innovative idea. In my travels to Chicago, I've already had two mayors from other suburbs approach me and say, what is this thing you're building in your downtown? Can I bring a group out there to see this? I say, well, we're still building it, so wait a while before you come. And they said, what are you going to do with the boardwalk? I said, well, if you come out here, you're going to see this really is on a boardwalk. So I've had several tell me that they're preparing to come out and see what Batavia's done here. So again, all that volunteer effort is all sweat equity for the community good. And I certainly appreciate and acknowledge that we wouldn't be going as great as we are if we didn't have all this, you know, unified talent in this town, working to make this a better place. And nobody's standing there smiling because they're making a bunch of money for themselves or anything else. If nothing else, they're getting themselves a backache or a sore foot because they're dropping a piece of lumber on it or something. I mean, it's all of the community dedication to its highest mold and something that we should all be very proud of. So my hat's off to this whole group and thank, you know, I know Alderman Callahan, you were one of the leaders in this movement. I just want to thank you and all those on the council that were with you to kind of push this along. I know you went on the trip over to Muskegon, Michigan, and saw their thing. And hopefully, what we're doing here will kind of outshine them when we're done with this. So we'll see, but again, a great effort. All right, I guess the next thing we need to do is have a motion for executive session to, for discussion on personnel.
So moved, Mike.
Second, sir.
Moved by Alderman Meitzler, was it?
Yep.
Second by Sharon, that the council adjourned to executive session, any discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Malley? Ure?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Oh, gotcha. Mick Redden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Wolfe?
No.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
That vote is 13 yes, 1 no for entering executive session, so we will adjourn this meeting. And are we coming, we're not coming back for any more business, are we, after the executive session?
No, we are not.
Okay, so there won't be any further need for anybody that's viewing this otherwise to stay on, because we're going to adjourn and reconvene in executive session, and there will be no business following the adjournment of that session. So I'll declare this meeting momentarily adjourned till we return to executive session. Bear with us.